I have a call to be in order. Everyone take the seats please. Call the December tenth meeting. Please see your screen, order with your all people's rights and the site of the pipeline for you.
The meeting is supervised by the United States of America and through the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight on this warm spring evening. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to mute silence or otherwise. Time to roll call vote. Mr. Park here. Mr. Hopkins here. Mrs. Nixon. Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Cruse Dell.
Here.
Mrs. Conlon.
Here.
Mayor Hall is here. Public forum. City Council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public's comment, not to act on the public's comment at that time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the city council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone at this time wishing to address the council? Mr. Navy.
Sorry, I'm out.
Sorry, I'm out. Good evening. Kurt Navy, CBDD. CBDT, there we go. A couple things. Library, once again, working together in our community. Just another example, the theater report has agreed to show a movie tomorrow night, The Five Dollar Mission, and that all those proceeds will go to the new library tomorrow night at seven o'clock if you're available. Come on down and join us, but once again, like I said, it's nice working with both Cedar Springs and the collaboration. Second thing is, we are in the, maybe I'll make the list longer, Sherry London. We are, have an agreement to purchase property from Mr. Summers on the north side of Cedar Creek, so now the CBDT will have that access on the north side so we can do this and master plan calls highlighting the duplication of our national resources, and that property also goes up to Pine Street. And what our talk is, A, get it in fold, but we'll take a look at in the future part of the new parking, the new parking for the amphitheater and for the community center also. So we're very happy with that. Our next big thing's gonna be cleaning that up. Come on before I walk and get mired in mud, they had to cross it, make sure we do some heat. But anyways, it's a nice piece of property. The third thing that I wanted to bring out, Council of Conference, has been brought to my attention numerous times, involvement and the passions you have for Cedar Springs. The number of things that you are involved with is a sound need to say please, and please know that for citizens of Cedar Springs, go to all your hard work and the things that you are delving into to help Cedar Springs become better. Thank you, Eric, very much.
Thank you. Good job. Any other person wishing to address the council at this time? Last call, anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Hearing and seeing, right? Moving on. We have a presentation. Our, 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 we have a book here for you. I'll head off here.
Yeah, I don't want to make the list of too many pages, but thank you for having me back, and we did a little bit ago, I'm here to report on it tonight. Page one of that book is, the page in our letter has our opinion on the financial statements. Right near the bottom you can see that's a good opinion, it says in our opinion, the statements presented fairly in almost your respects, the financial position of the city. It's a good clean opinion, that's what you hope for when you have an opinion. The city also has USDA bonds outstanding, so that requires that we stand the scope of the audit a little bit, and to audit in accordance with government auditing standards, so there's a second report in the back on internal controls and compliance, so that's not every city does that, but you do because you have triple, have standing USDA laws. Just the big things that occurred in the city this year. Refunding bonds were issued, that saves the city about three hundred thousand over the next twenty years, and paying off those bonds because of lower interest rates, that's great. We have P sixty-eight, a new accounting standard was implemented this year, and as you go to page ninety, you can see the effects of that implementation. This is your statement net position. Now what that statement requires is that the net pension liability be recorded on your financial statements, and you can see about midway down the page, there's a line called pension liability, it totals about three hundred thousand, which is very low considering compared to a lot of other cities. Right at the bottom of the page you see unrestricted, the line called unrestricted, that's your net position, and many, many cities went into the deficit on that line. Cedar Springs did not because of the implementation of this, so you came up pretty clean considering what had to be done there. And then the only other thing in the book that I wanted to make a turn to, on page thirty-nine, and this is just the general fund budget and actual page. The general fund finished budget for a loss of about forty-one thousand, and you finished with a positive sixty-four thousand, so you finished with about a hundred and five thousand out of budget. It really did? Well, we'll take a look at more details on some of the slides here. Let's see, the first slide here is, this is your government, governmental activities, that's all of the general fund, the street funds, everything basically except for water, sewer, on a full accrual basis. And what this slide does is shows you the expenses by department compared to the program revenues, which is the lighter bar, and you can see in most cases the program revenues or direct revenues are less than the expenses, and what this is showing you is what the property taxes and state shared revenue is covering. You can see like the streets department, that revenue is higher than expenses, that depends a lot on what projects are completed here in the year in the streets, so this year you didn't do quite as much in the streets, so the revenue is a little bit higher. That's really all I'm trying to show on that slide. This slide, it shows you the source of your, your revenues, and you can see, these are very comparable to the previous year, I go back and look and kind of compare the highs, and they're very comparable, but seventy percent of the revenues in these governmental activities comes from state shared and property taxes, so it's a big chunk of your, your revenue. Now these next couple slides are just the general fund, that's the one that's measured as well, and these are the revenues, you can see compared to the last, what do we got, six years going there, very comparable, taxes are up a little bit again after falling a couple of years ago, state shared is up a little bit, and the other revenue, there's some miscellaneous item in there that was at one time spiked, and I looked to see what it was, but I didn't handle it, I don't remember what it was, but. And these are the expenditures in the general fund again, and you can see the general fund this year had a big spike, the vast majority of that spike is attorney fees, hopefully next year we'll see that spike back down, or expense on something else. Public safety, you can see, fell way down, that's because of the contracting or outsourcing your policing services primarily along with about seventy thousand in capital last year with a much, the change in the LDA was about seventy thousand, so you didn't buy as much capital this year in that department. The other ones are, are pretty comparable. And this is your general fund, fund balance as a percent of expenses and transfers, and you can see that we compare this with every city, and you can see it's been trending upward for several years, and the balance holding steady right around sixteen percent. That's a very good percentage, I've got another slide in a minute that'll show you how you compare to other cities. Sewer fund, you can see it's, the little yellow bar is tiny this year, but that's your income or loss, and it's been positive for the last several years, that's good, that means you're covering your depreciation and your interest expense in the fund, so that's a, a good positive thing. And the water fund, the same thing, depreciation in the water is much less than the sewer fund just because of less work done over the last many years. And here's, this is a comparison of the general fund restricted, or general fund fund balance that I mentioned a minute ago, and what this is, this is not scientific, it's, it's the cities we audit, and you can see where we're at, Cedar Springs one compares to the other cities that we audit, and this is just one number, general, different cities have different activities going on in their general fund, but just to give you a, a kind of picture of where you stand compared to others. And this is organized by the biggest general fund budget on the left to the smallest one on the right, so you can see it's kind of interesting that the cities with smaller budgets tend to have a higher percentage, so it's, just being truthful, that's, that's it.
On the one side, it shows the utility, our water expenses, now that doesn't take into account the construction projects we have going on in the spot?
No, but the construction in most funds gets capitalized, so it's not shown as an expenditure, it gets expensed over the years, that's depreciation.
Okay. Other than that, we did issue a separate letter with a few little points in it, you
know, not the major, just cleaning up some things, getting back to what staff turned over, getting back reviewing the bankrupt reconciliation, and setting up a separate comp for restricted bond money, and that's gonna look into the agency funding, but that's interesting. Are there any questions I can ask?
There's any question? Uh, just one, fund balance is at sixty percent?
Yes.
And our ordinance requires us to be at twenty percent?
Okay.
I believe.
If you say so, yes, it's in your fund right now.
So there's a forty percent in there that's the need for emergency or?
The, the sixty percent becomes all of your fund balance, and if the ordinance made power just on signs, unbalanced, which would be a lower number, and I can calculate that, but I don't have a.
There's some of the assigned, some of the restricted, some of the.
Some of the, some of the assigned, some of the committed, some of the restricted.
Okay. Is that, the big piece of that, it's the money we have for pension fund, right? Yes, this time.
The hundred and seventy-five thousand that came from that.
Right. I'm not sure if I can remember that on those big texts.
That is true.
Assigned or committed, whatever determines, but no, that's immediate.
Correct. So you're true, you're, how does sign fund balance in the general fund is about six hundred and ninety thousand?
And then what's that percent?
I can't do my math right. But it would be six ninety divided into one point five million dollars.
Into one point five.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential to increase.
Forty-seven percent?
Yeah.
Forty-one, forty-two, forty-three.
But still, it's in the good, but.
Right. But should, we have a really accurate pick there?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Eric, appreciate that.
If you have any question, I want to do a, any comments that come again next year.
Yeah, don't say what you want to say.
We should have cookies, okay?
It is good news.
Yeah.
We should have cookies and punch, she left a card. No? No?
Okay. Public hearing. You have none? Um, approval of the agenda as printed.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the agenda, but striking, I will find it against the, because upon recognition from our attorney, we don't need a motion.
Remove the seconded, that we strike unfinished business, item C, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the roll call. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruse Dell?
Yes.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Conlon will cast one for period. Consent agenda. We have before us, approval of the Minnesota regular meeting on November twelfth, twenty fifteen, and the special meeting on November nineteenth, twenty fifteen, and December third, twenty fifteen. Approval of checks paid prior to the number three eight two six six through three eight three four six totaling a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents. The December accounts payable check numbers thirty-eight three forty-seven through thirty-eight three sixty-one totaling thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighteen cents. The electronic trunks are totaling one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, and the total checks and transfers payable one hundred, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and one sixty-seven eighty-three. And the resolution twenty fifteen thirty-three, a regulation that sets out the regular meeting dates of the city council, January sixteenth to December sixteenth. Approval of a five thousand dollar annual disbursement to the Cedar Springs Parks and Rec. Approval of annual disbursement of the Evelyn Carson Fund to the Cedar Springs Ministerial Association for the E D families within the city of Cedar Springs limits. Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-one, a resolution to collect one hundred percent of the Kent Intermediate School District property tax in the summer of twenty sixteen as required pursuant to Act four fifty-one, Act of Michigan nineteen seventy-six, as amended. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to consent agenda is present. Set. Remove consent agenda, is there any discussion?
I, I have a phone.
Okay.
The, um, the phone bill this month, Deb, went up, is there, is there, somebody's the AT&T went up? I would have to call them, I don't have the invoices in front of me.
It was, it's been like eight sixteens.
What, what type number is it?
Three eight two six six.
I don't have it here, I can't even pick it up and let you know.
All right, and, and, um, I know it's white stone home, was written for Christmas lights?
Yep. Hey, go and replace all the bulbs on the day Christmas case.
On Evelyn Carson.
Yep.
And I see the ministerial fund was nine hundred and twenty-nine, is that like interest offered at fifteen?
It's a, they get a one-time distribution each year and then three interest payments a year. It was ten cents more than it was last year.
That money comes from the Mrs. Carson Fund, instead of trust up, and maybe we could score this for the E D families, for the Cedar Springs.
That's great. And I see we got our leak floor, our leak vacuum?
The leak vacuum, yes.
Came in?
Yep.
That's all, um, this is what the talk's due.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Regarding the, present, hearing none of the roll call vote, Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Cruse Dell?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Roll call vote cast was from hearing. What is fun? I can hand them out.
Um, we have a letter from the Cedar Springs Historical Society in New Zealand, thanking you for your financial support, and also included was a magazine article that was in a magazine called Michigan, it's a Western Michigan Geological Society article, it's a very long, very nice article about the museum.
I talked to Mr. Donald, and the museum has been achieved, like the first place of small museums of their size, and we should, I would pick out of that, and they were very, very thankful, and we, so, pretty much, so.
I was just talking with Sharon the other day, she asked me if we saw the magazine, she's wearing a race car, so, she just, she sent it, and I seen, oh, there it is, kind of listen, but she said that, you know, they were very thankful, like you said, they got , what do you see, other small museums that are coming in for a place, about how they do this, how they do that, and so our museum is going to recognize, in a way, like we, our world, just like sex and things, but, it's a great asset for our community.
Um, would there be a way to contact someone who needs a company, like, say?
Another thing, if we needed somebody, like, so you don't have to come every month, it'd be nice to do it for a thing or something like that, most of the, be that coming off, you can upload the multiple, coming off of the, coming through.
But I would love to, you know.
I talked to Mr. Donald, and he said, any kind of line, I think we already had, had to correct that, what's the question?
Would this be something that, um, you need for, for, I mean, for the magazine and, and, yeah, put that, you know, maybe some of.
Do you have any January?
Yeah, that's, that's.
I would love to do that.
Well, I would care if you bring it up, maybe, if you have that much, but.
And, and, yeah.
And the other articles, you have two updates from my guy at the council, you write by Cedar's lawyer, and two months for our community development, two minutes.
We, other discussions on board for the front, hearing none. Moving on to unfinished business, item A, second consideration, local office compensation committee recommendation for Thompson and Merrill annual pay grade. We discussed the last month, and, uh, also will help.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we start.
Set. Remove the seconded, that we reject our day raise, as the local compensation committee has recommended us, so, seeing how there's many laws there, I think the roll call vote, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Cruse Dell?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
And Ray Bull?
Yes.
Let them know we really appreciate that work that they do, and, uh, we do appreciate it.
Let's help.
We make up too much money here, so. Okay. Item B, for consideration, council action on second amendment with delivery Skyhawk model. Um, we discussed this, this will be a fourth time in front of us, or just, or, I'll give my short report again, I, I haven't collected information, but it just does not come together as fast as I, the night before, so I, I would prefer to delay, yeah. Okay, um, we have to make a motion to table it?
I mean, is anyone waiting, I imagine the Skyhawks would like to know.
Um, Mr. Park?
I talked to, uh, the president, and, uh, he understands what's going on, so it's very important.
All right. Is there something that you want him to come to the meeting, and next to any more questions?
He may, I don't know, he hasn't suggested that he would like to, but, uh, he just said that he watched, a several meetings ago on the video, on the video cam, to see what we did on a certain discussion about that, so he is following, so I'd like to ask him if he would like to do that. Okay. What's the role of council on this, in our paper? Mar, would you postpone discussion with the site for another one?
Second.
Remove the second to table this, um, I'll take a roll call, there's no other further discussion. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cruse Dell?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
What's the role of, of, of the period to table? Okay, moving on to item B. Discussion regarding the hanging of the newly restored red flag poster in City Hall as requested by Councilor Powell. In the workshop, we discussed this, and I think we all come to a conclusion that we would have corrected on that wall right next to COVID, correct? Any other discussion? Mr. Powell?
Are we going to go around this, or is it just a roll of the council?
Well, I don't think we're rocking, so, okay, Democrats' consensus, that probably won't, will have it, so, the budget chair is not moving. Yes. I'm sure, I'm sure they'll find the proper height.
I feel like our staff is going to complain.
For the, correct height, you know. Okay, um, and, and.
You have a media clerk.
Okay, moving on, any other? Okay, we have another discussion regarding a traffic study for Main Street as requested by Councilor Powell. Uh, I know we had discussed possibly looking at some other avenues and maybe using this as a budgeting item, and see what explanation we can come up with.
The, the, the master plan from two thousand and ten, I believe it is, per five, there's some discrepancy, the latest one, was eighty-nine hundred, and a rough estimate from the Kent County Respects Beyond Delay averaged, as I can remember, I don't have the data right here, about twenty thousand a day. You don't remember?
I don't remember it, there's about ten thousand.
That's what I have here, in one direction, in one direction.
Right.
So, and there were days when it was slow, and there was days when it was a tease.
Fourteen, something like that, Wednesday.
Yeah.
I, I think this will be, probably, to put out this spring because of the winter falling season, we cannot do it now, um, so that's something to probably budget for, to be in the budget if we, if we had one done.
The trade fight, the October.
I have a portion, were those ten thousand waiting town or ending town?
Going north.
Yeah.
Ten thousand heading north.
We could get, you know, it doesn't matter what direction it's going, these are kind of preliminary numbers, but if, if we so desire, by the time we can have this, count thunder in the summer, we can get some traffic out, let's hook the machine out, it's probably, still probably, we come in the, 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 the.
Well, I was thinking, because we're working on this master plan, and it was part of our master plan before, that might be a good idea at this time, and we're going like crazy, that, and I also heard something about contacting the road commission, that they might have some data or some outreach for, so I'd be glad to investigate that for the future.
Mr. Mayor, I think that someone might have some.
I was your hard information, we had it to go, it was twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand?
Each side.
That's cool, up and down.
Each side?
Yes, okay, so, looking at about twelve thousand.
We were excited.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, since we're telling you the question?
Okay.
Um, the data that you got before, does that still exist somewhere, like, could it be found and brought back to us?
No, it was out.
Okay. So, is that something we could see January?
Absolutely.
Okay. Could that, hey, that's one of the... I've got it somewhere. I follow you too.
Mr. Mayor. May I clarify? That is not a traffic study.
No, that's not. Right.
Those numbers aren't even close to being... It's, it's good information, but it's not a traffic study.
Of course not.
The math is not being done in, uh...
Of course not.
You need to contract with our engineering firm to do a traffic study if that's what you want.
Right.
Just wait a click.
Right. My, my question would be, I wanted some idea of what the threshold of where we could start making changes? Because it doesn't, this is just my opinion. It doesn't make a lot of sense to put a lot of money into traffic study where we know we're not going to get that much money. Where if we think we're in the ballpark, then maybe investigate.
I think by then, we get the information and then it's a march within the apartment. And it doesn't bother much.
Um, how much is a cop's search target? Twenty, twenty-five thousand?
I, I don't know. I could find out.
It's not cheap.
Right. Okay.
It's not cheap. Okay. Now, I guess perhaps let's go up against a little beta and, like, let's, let's say now.
Okay.
Okay. Item A. Okay. Item A. Discussion regarding the development of a parking lot at Second and Maple Street as requested by Councilor Powell. I know anything that we do there, we would have to go through the, the building family to make sure they have their blessing that we can do whatever. Um, you know, that's on the DDA's radar to do something with that. Um, planning commission has discussed that. And also I'm sure the community development team has also discussed that as future parking. Uh, in talking with a couple of council members and Mr. Hopkins, he has suggested possibly putting up a parking sign up for snowmobiles. So, that's some discussion we can work out. Contemporary ideal spot to park snowmobile during the winter months to patronize our newest establishment. So, we would have to make sure that the Hilton family was okay with that if that's the direction of town solution. And I'm sure, because I'm in the radar, to be someday soon, hopefully, a parking lot.
At least if there's snow there, we can do parking up there.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I have a question.
How do you believe that in the master plan it was drawn up as a parking lot? So, maybe somebody already did address that with the Hiltons? Or should we go ahead and discuss it with them?
I think now because of the change in the family dynamics, um, it's the Hilton and it's likely passed and, uh, I understand that children are involved in this. Uh, but I think this is a common courtesy. We should, we should press that with them just for the first...
Do you know which one I should contact, please?
Um, I'm not aware of... Mr. Mayor, are you...
Carson.
Dale Larson?
Yeah.
Dale Larson is a nephew. I know, um, Mr. Taylor and the communication with somebody kind of...
Okay.
So, before, you know, that's kind of the general synopsis of the whole area. That will be developed as a update lot. I know at one time there was a discussion that the seller, you know, that cannot be done unless the whole family approves that. So, moving forward, you know, it's, yeah, I'm trying to relate that. I believe they also took that to be a parking lot in the future also.
So, I should maybe discuss with them about a temporary snowmobile parking court until we do something permanent like that?
Okay. Also, I have to... Listen, I think... I'll call Kevin tomorrow.
Okay. So, if they have any objections to putting a sign in there, definitely the snowmobile?
Yep. If he can't make the decision, hold on this one chat.
Okay. So, you're getting help with that?
Yep.
I don't see how we can get into much of a discussion without having some, uh, quotations as to what it would be to, I know, with all due respect, your compels are seventy thousand, you know, but if you had different entities that took a look at it and said, you know, wouldn't that cost that much?
Very true. We can, uh, possibly, you know, look at all options. We want it built to the city's standards and maybe the community development team could have their contractor, possibly. We, there's a lot of avenues we could go down.
There's also some grant money.
Yeah. Patch it to the library.
Yeah.
We want to be...
For grants.
You know, very true. There's some grants out there possibly that we want to be very cautious not to do any construction on that lot until they have looked at that grant. Because some were very specific. You put a shovel in there, you just qualify the grant. We have a very...
Yeah. Or anything we should be not...
No plans or nothing.
Doing anything to extra.
We'll look into that and hopefully we get that for the, for the... Any other discussion on item A? Okay. I'm going to move to item B. Uh, aerial business matters. Um, I have one appointment for Mr. Bernie Byer. He's a four-year former student at DDA. I have, um, ten million dollars. His term is also up. Have they tried to track him down to the city and back if he does? Maybe four times either unless the chair calls or an addition. So, presenting, I'm dreading to that.
Mr. Mayor, any complaints? You have Bernie Byer's four-year appointment at the DDA.
That's four years.
It's been moved in second to appoint Mr. Bernie Byer to the DDA for a term of four years. Any other... All those in favor of appointing Mr. Byer, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to appointing Mr. Byer, signify by by saying no. Hearing none. Motion parried. Mr. Byer, appointing for a year. Thank you. New business. Item A. Motion to waive policy number twelve to act on a pay increase to the deputy finance director at first consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to waive the draw man and pay increase for deputy finance director at first consideration.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of waiving policy twelve for the pay increase for deputy Kirk, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by sign no. Hearing none. Policy twelve is waived. Item one. Approval of... Motion to approve a pay increase for the deputy director.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a pay increase not to exceed fourteen dollars an hour for the deputy finance director.
Second. Okay. It's been moved in seconded for a pay increase up to fifteen dollars per hour. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing, yes, this call.
I think there's a great asset to honor. My office and London, who is in a heck of a big position right now, a big work mode. The only thing I would like to ask is if we can have desk plates on there, desks outside, so that, um, people know who they're talking to.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
We used to do that a number of years ago. For once, I can't remember which city manager, it hasn't removed. We could do that.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
I've just had people say, "Well, I don't know what name was." It was that one or it was that one over there.
I heard that.
I've heard that too.
Well, we can, okay, great.
Thank you.
You know, and this is a side note. She's been here over a year and she's been passed over. She has, they, for whatever reason, her three-month eval and her six-month eval didn't happen.
On her one year.
On her one year.
Her one year didn't happen. I checked into that. I never did not.
We just didn't give her any money?
We just didn't.
We said, "Good jobs."
Okay. Mr. Mayor, may I just make a statement? My limited contacts with, uh, City Hall, I found her to be, uh, very, very friendly and, uh, right on her feet. What can I do for you this month? And that's the type of representation that it would be.
Thank you very much. I agree with Bob on that. Is everything I can do, is he smiling face? I tell is a smile. Okay. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, yes. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Absolutely.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes.
Infatuated.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Yes.
You're welcome. Maybe if I do chopper or something to you, probably.
All right. Item B. First consideration, request for a working holiday for Martin Luther King Day on January eighteenth, twenty sixteen. As the hearing, um, in January's council meeting will decide yes or no. But, uh, the request is to have a, a workday, working holiday, and Martin Luther King Day here at City Hall, January eighteenth, twenty sixteen.
That'll be working.
Okay.
How is it?
Any other discussion on that?
Yes.
For next month. Okay. Moving on to item C. Motion to waive policy number twelve to act on sending a public hearing on the conditional transfer of property from Solon Township to the jurisdiction of the city of Cedar Springs at first consideration. It's a low down.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive policy number twelve and act on setting a public hearing on the conditional transfer of property from Solon Township into jurisdiction of the city of Cedar Springs at first consideration.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Would you explain that to us again?
We will when we go to...
Why we...
Oh, we're just waiting. Yeah. I want to know why we're doing Ronnie Rollington's... Okay. We discussed. But, yeah.
I get caught up.
Any other discussion?
Hold on.
I'm going to do a discussion for now. All those in favor of waiving policy number twelve, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by by saying no. Policy twelve is passed. I would entertain a motion to set a seven P M. January fourteenth, twenty sixteen, public hearing on the conditional transfer of property from Solon Township to the jurisdiction of the city of Cedar Springs. Parcel address, one four one zero zero White Creek Avenue. Parcel number forty-one dash zero two dash twenty-five dash three hundred dash zero two six.
One second.
I mean, the seconded. Mayor Burke, you...
Now I'm the mayor?
We just got to switch chairs. Would you like to speak to this?
Um, you have in your packet a, a letter from Solon Township requesting how this property be brought in under the four twenty-five. It's a one acre parcel, just no infrastructure. Um, as you did last month, this, um, for a parcel that was requested to come into the city, this one also has to be split and, um, finalized with the land division from the township. And that might even have happened by January. I'm not sure. We'll, we'll have to wait and see. But your first step is setting a public hearing so that the public can, um, give you any point on that next. Just hope this request is for this particular time.
As by law, we're required to pass this and post a public hearing so we can get the three hundred foot letters and any opposing or report and...
Three hundred feet of letters don't have to go out for. It just has to be public.
Okay. This one has to be public. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none?
No. That was the explanation.
Okay.
We heard them over that night. I guess...
Hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote. Mitch Park?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins? Sorry. Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Votes yes. Okay.
Was there, was there a...
Um, yes. I'm not sure if I want to release public...
Okay. But without saying the name, there's, is it...
Yes.
It all depends on it, um, how they're going to be looked at by the assessor. But he hasn't filed what paperwork yet to be, um, to see what classification that the assessor is giving. I agree.
Okay. Moving on. Discussion regarding if the council will pursue a grant process for the extension on West Street. Before you, you have a letter from... Enough discussing or explaining out what our costs would be. That would be, um, upgrading some of the utilities there too. So, it's not just all road work.
Just, just Mr. Mayor, if I may. Let's look at that one point five million as perspective. As we just heard from the auditor, that's an entire year elaborated as well. That's our entire budget for a year. I mean, just, just to, just to put it in perspective. He just said, when we were talking about our fund management, I just wrote it down.
Yeah. Our annual revenue was about that per year. So, you know, yeah, do we need to develop that property? And that will make it more saleable. I guess the real question I have is, um, we don't have a million five. Um, I think we need to be open. There may be some other businesses to contact yet that, that may step up and help us with this. But, um, I don't think we should slam the door on it. But I think we should continue to, to look at what we can do, um, possibly have... Mr. Christian had set up a meeting with, um, Display Pack. Um, the others, some more parties hopefully interested in presenting us or giving us or helping us with this very large expense. Yeah. Right now, a million five looks a lot. Um, you know, that property has sat for twenty years. There's no services there, so that's why it's not done with this thing. I, at one time, Dr. Construction wanted to buy the whole parcel. Um, for whatever. They did not. So, I think there's some potential there in the future. But, uh, when? My crystal ball is pretty cloudy. But I think we need to be open minded on what direction we go.
All right.
Nixon?
Harry. I never knew.
You have to know. Long night.
My, my thought is, I, I know that it was, explaining that that's not how business is done, that anyone would buy it with a conditional offer. Because they certainly do have their timetables. But I wonder if even if you look into a developer buying it for our cost of the grant and then they would sell it for profit. And we would still come out ahead in that we would have that industrial tenant base. I, I wonder if there would be anyone interested in that.
Very true. But the properties out there aren't very valuable as far as amount of the land. I think, uh, Display Pack paid like not, what, sixteen hundred dollars an acre?
Something like that.
So, there's no fortune to be made there in selling the land. But it's...
Okay.
But it's, it's very...
I'm going to hit the wall. I'm seeing if it sticks.
You know, it's a very good idea. You know, it's a very good idea, if they can have the property very inexpensively, they can afford to help us with the infrastructure, or see where we know, but we need to keep our eyes open.
Sure.
Listen, I'm, uh, you know, just wondering, uh, the property's of no value to us as a city, as I see it.
And so could it be sold at a very reasonable price under terms that it would be developed by whoever buys it? You know, or a portion of it, which will get us down the line a little bit, get us started in the right direction.
Yeah, Mrs. Nixon's thoughts were right on that line.
If we sell it before the grant money goes away.
Okay.
That's true. It would have, it would have to be continued to be owned by the city as, at least a piece of the development, or, or to be eligible for the grant. And, just as a FYI, I mean, like, this grant money is going to be held, it's not for private businesses.
Mr. Hopkins, you have anything?
Nothing on the way back.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, coming back to the question I asked Tom earlier, so the Ganderford West Street is now, how many more feet yards, miles, how would, would the utility draw out?
I don't know without looking it up.
Yeah, it's beautiful, quite a, just like you're, probably seven.
Probably.
It's a half mile.
That's what I was just gonna say, a half mile?
But it's, it's not going all the way to 16, you know?
Right.
It's going to.
Quarter to a quarter of a mile, sixteen.
Quarter mile, probably.
It's a half. About a half mile.
A lot.
Depends on if you turn west and have a cul-de-sac and. Pretty good amount is exactly that.
Yep, there we go.
No, it's two quarters for sixteen.
I would guess 1500 feet.
And would that, would that, one side, would that be the, the?
It's, it would all.
Both sides do.
Both.
Yeah.
Both sides do, and four and a half.
No. Take a quarter off or.
Pull it off one side.
It'd go through though.
If you went down West Street and kept right on driving at the end of the cul-de-sac there, you would go down to the fence line at the back, and that's what we're talking about. It's just a call. This is the call.
I, I'm not opposed to continuing the conversation. I, I'm not opposed to putting it up in front of the voters to talk about a bond, if it's something the community feels strongly about. But we don't have 1.5 million dollars in the budget.
Well, then I guess, um.
And that means not run the city for a year.
We, we wouldn't get a manager retired.
Okay, true.
So, we'll have, um, Mrs. Christian shut down with, uh, operators of Display Pack and whomever should be necessary, probably to leave some information or places or anybody bring it back to us at later date. Yeah, about the kind. Any other discussion on item B? Moving on to item E, discussion regarding the process to restore red plant town identity regarding red plant towns, Cedar Springs, Michigan's, uh, city symbols, street signs, stickers, uh, city parks and cemetery signs that required, requested by coun, or, yeah, this was requested by councilman, Councilor Powell, Ms. Powell.
Okay, um, I'd like to look into some prices for, uh, stickers, uh, the city parks and cemetery signs. I think there's some things we can do that wouldn't be extremely expensive, I'd like to go ahead and get some prices, maybe get them in the budget. There's a possibility of having some volunteers help to restore some of the things we've lost and, um, see what we can do. And we discussed our, our logo, the Michigan logo, which isn't up there anymore, that it, it really is a nice logo, but how can we incorporate red flannel into that? Get some ideas and, um, as we run out of our existing stationery to replace it with going on with the, uh, incorporating the red flannel town logo. And, uh, I'd like to look into those things, maybe someday we could, uh, city flag again. And, uh, I think we've made a good start so far, and, um, I, my feedback from folks is that very, very happens here with the town.
I have that too.
And, uh, just go forward with it, over here.
Yeah, I think, you know, we may move slow with this, but by all means, we have a discussion, uh, with the stationery. Uh, Mrs. Christian said that, uh, our web creator, whomever designed it's original, and she would get with them and put them, so if anybody has any, uh, recommendations you think of, you submit them.
Should we open this to the public or?
Um, I think we, after we did that, yeah, we gave them one of the public's feedback. Actually, since some of the businesses that have talked to me, it's like, how can the grand is being put out for ours, uh, we can let the public put their input and what do a lot for our city logo to school and our, everything going out, I think it'd be better.
Well, that's fair, see, um, yeah, we, um, yeah, we could do that, we could have some discussion, have, uh, we'll be on the city webpage or ask people that, you know, I don't think we need to jump right into this right away. Uh, but by all means, we need to set some, uh, timetables and dates on when and how I'll do it. You know, we got some pretty big things coming up.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you something?
So, when do we get going, go ahead, Mrs.
Um, I, I have a couple of questions, one, do you think it would be reasonable to ask the web person to maybe have something by February?
I can try, we're hoping to get the, the new webpage up by January 1st.
So we could try it out for people for a couple of months, let people look at it.
So you want to see her design before you open it up to the public?
Well, I, e- even if we open it up to the public, let other, let other people look at it for a little while and get some input.
Well, even if she could do two or three, and you people.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, even if we do three, we don't want to get one term up there because then we'll end up with a real empty pot.
Yeah, you're allowed to be given an option.
Yeah.
Or people give somebody just one thing, they're like, oh, you're forcing it up.
Right, no, I don't disagree.
But it's three to three.
Good point.
But that doesn't.
Yeah.
It's also picking up.
Like, maybe two, maybe three.
She's not, why you do this for free and by.
No, there'll be a fee, so we need to be aware, you know, I think.
But this is not an option, it's the city manager.
Right, that'll go past.
So, uh, I think, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, cherishing our heritage and embracing our future, I'd like to see that tagline stay.
Yeah, I'd like to.
So we wouldn't have to worry about that.
The red flannel down the USA across the bottom of the city of Cedar Springs.
Do you, do you want to make a word?
If it's reasonable, if it's not reasonable, it could be knowledge.
Well, I'm just thinking if we got a figure from her for the January meeting.
I think that's the first step.
Right.
We need to, oh, I think we need to find out what it's going to cost us to do the design.
Yeah, that's how it is.
And then in the meantime, have some people put some regulations together.
Yeah, can she give us the maximum, do you think, by January?
That's a plan I really must break in.
Okay.
I, I cannot see paying, and I would never expect her to work for free, I, I want to make that very clear. But I cannot see paying someone to redo our logo if we want the red flannel logo. We have the right to just put that on our stationery as per contract with the Red Flannel Festival, and that is free.
Yes.
That's free, but the person that designed it is not, it's not.
No, it's already made.
Right, but don't, don't you think we want a slightly different version than what the festival uses?
I think I don't want the city to pay for it at this particular juncture.
I think that's, uh.
I think there's free things we can do, like putting the benches back and leaving the flannel up. That is all.
Let's, um, I think the consensus will get some prices on what the, what master charges to, and then in the meantime.
Then we could vote on it from there.
Submit what we have, and then go from there, all that.
And then, excellent, I have one more question, Mr. Mayor?
Only one?
Yeah, only one. That's cool. Um, I will, I will own asking lots of questions. Uh, street sign, the question about the stickers and the street sign, the street signs are starting to look a little worn. What is the expected lifespan on a street sign, and where are we at in that expected lifespan?
I would feel the tone about that.
I put those street signs up, so they're.
They get run over, they get.